Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So, we will officially call to order, and Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay, we have nothing under Committee, the whole closed meeting, so we will move to an approval of the addits. We have an addition of three delegations, a briefing, an information report, a notice of motion, and some communications. Can I have a mover and seconder for the addits? Thank you. Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Neal. Please vote. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Counselor Bowman.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, I, Ryan Bowman, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause F, Report Number 99. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have a pecuniary in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor George.
Thank you, your worship. I, Kevin George, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause II, Report Number 101, as my company has been retained by the applicant to provide survey services.
Okay, seeing no other declarations of pecuniary interest, we will move to, we have no presentations, so we will move to delegations. So our first delegation this evening is Simon Astmas, who will appear before council to speak to Information Report Number Three with respect to 671 Brock Street Site Configuration and Public Consultation Summary. And just a reminder to all of our delegations that you have five minutes. Mr. Astmas.
Hello. So I'm speaking about the property at 671 Brock Street, and it's a place that I frequent a couple of times a day, and it's been a place of social community and great, just kind of connection with Mother Earth. My question about this whole kind of agenda is that I felt that the whole movement towards the planning and the city planning was kind of leaving the community outside of the developments, and did not really bring it aware until a process had already been, or official plan had already been developed, and then was presented later without full community input. So my questions that I have today are really just kind of to bring some awareness about the whole process, and questioning what makes Kingston the best living city? One that's attractive, one that invites new young families and retains longstanding citizens. In 2006, it was fall, bright autumn colors filled the air, and it was a time when I first visited Kingston, and was coming to see the campus of Queen's University. The entire city was blanketed with these colors, it was just an awe-sighting thing to see, and I enjoyed the visuals, the nature, the trees, the wildlife, the flowers, the diversity within the area, and I thought that this could be a place that I could live and attend university with an open-ended agenda for when I finished. So when I came to tour, I had a value for nature, open green space, artistry, culture, and a feel for the, just the essence of what a full experience of life would be while I was in school. I was touring not just the campus, but the city in which I'd be living, because the two are quite related, and it's not just a small little bubble, but it's something that extends beyond that little space. And as I explored, I noticed the open green space was not just a part of the campus that I visited, it extended beyond, and it integrated into the core of the city. I found a vibrant living history here, adorned with green spaces, openness, and artistry of many kinds, feeling rustic and beautiful with architecture. Kingston appeared to be a space that invited excellent mixture of culture, diversity, community, modern innovation, and had nature as an underlying foundation. I thought to myself, this city must be dedicated to sustainability. So what did I do? Moved here, clearly. That was 10 years ago. I accepted entrance to the Queen's, and my primary motivation for moving here is that it appeared to be a city where living respectfully and harmoniously with nature is important and valued, and is a city that I want to live in. It is not just a standard box city like other concrete urban jungles, it's a city that nately feels like home. A city with care and keen attention, a form of intelligence about our planet, nature, land, culture, community, that supports a stable foundation in which to grow from respectfully. To me, this is what Kingston is, is what made it the best city. Natural, livable, sustainable, comprised of quality. Since in 2014, the city was named one of the top seven smart community by the Intelligent Community Forum, and their definition of a community is that it is a city that is a distinct identity and the ability to act in a unified manner as a single entity. Its citizens and businesses identify themselves with that. A community is enough to set aside small differences and to cooperate for the good of the whole. It is like an ecosystem of this planet, countless variety, biodiversity of species, all which maintain a role and balance on this life of the planet of Mother Earth. How can a vision then be sustained as it grows? A vision that brought me here and the vision that this city holds and looks to develop. Kingston desires to build a smart, livable city. This is what I've learned from the website and my recent research, just to update myself with their views. And as you and I may imagine doing so, it takes a combined effort, an effort that includes fairness, collaboration, and communication between the city and the community and the citizens.
Thirty seconds.
There is a problem which is this indicated on the 671 Brock Street. There is no initial public consultation for the community engagement in the process, and this is not really approached in a way that is fair, just, or sustainable. The planned areas are parkland, affordable housing, and private development, and in the city's best interests, it does not seem that private agenda would be the best place to develop, but to focus the attention on the affordable housing and the 75% parkland.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counselor Neal.
Thank you. I'm just curious, when did you first hear that there was a proposal with a recommendation coming to council? I believe it was on the 6th of September.
Yes, September 6th is when I was publicly there. I first learnt of it, the end of September is when I heard of it word of mouth through the community, just from attending that park.
And were you able to attend the public meeting that was held subsequent to the vote at council? Since only three of us on council, because of our busy schedules, were able to attend that public meeting, can you give a very kind of brief thumbnail response of what you heard at the public meeting?
Certainly. So yeah, October 3rd, I attended the meeting, where when I arrived, there were several billboards kind of put up, and kind of just the city planners were there, and there was, it looked to be as if a whole process and agenda and a whole plan had been put in place, and this is the first time I'm even hearing about there being an introduction or discussion about what was happening with the property. And then several questions, there was 30, 35 people that probably spoke in opposition of the proposed plan, and one individual who spoke in favor. And I raised just some questions at the finish of the meeting, just kind of inquiring about what, you know, they're proposing a plan, and they're directing the complete entire focus onto that one thing, but they didn't ask for input initially in terms of how we as the citizens may see that space being used.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was helpful.
Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I was at the meeting, and I got a mixed feeling about the affordable housing. Would you be in favor of the affordable housing going on this piece of property, the mixed affordable?
The, yes, it was labeled as affordable housing, and when it was questioned about what that was, it came to be that the affordable housing was not actually defined as affordable housing, it was actually mixed housing, which did not include the full units towards affordable. It was comprised as in thirds, ten towards affordable, ten to mixed, and ten as regular value, which seemed to be a confusing kind of title or tag for something that was not.
Thank you. I'll put it this way, have you heard of Regent Park in Toronto, and that the movement now for housing that is supported is to a mixed housing, that that's the modern way of looking at it, so that all types of people can be accommodated? Have you heard about that?
I have heard about it. I'm in favor of mixed, it would bring diversity in terms of, you know, not just one full group of a specific nature, but a completely, you know, a mixture of a variety of different families, different cultures, different places, whether it be students or families, single people, people that be working, and it would be a great way to help the community grow, and especially, you know, if they had access to parkland, it would be a bonus for that.
Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for your presentation. I was also at the public meeting, observing, and I guess I was hoping that we could have had a more thorough discussion there amongst the various opinions in the room, with the guidance of staff who sort of had all the information, to sort of understand the different facets of it, and I felt like it didn't really, we didn't get there unfortunately. One of the aspects that we didn't discuss was what, and I'd like to know your opinion, and I'm not asking this because you're a city planner or anyone professionally involved in real estate or anything, but just from your experience in life, living in various places, what do you think would have happened with the site if the city hadn't bought it?
If the city had not purchased it? It would depend on if a developer or someone were to purchase the school itself, and that would go through a whole different process. I'm not aware exactly what the process would be. My hopes for that area in terms of if I were to buy it personally and develop it myself would be to turn it into a kind of a community center where there's a place for people to support a community development, community environment that's supporting the arts, supporting culture. Kingston, I studied fine art at Queen's University, and I'd love to see the community of the art just expand in the city, because that would really bring just tourism, bring life, bring, you know, some drama, some life back into the city, rather than the very rigid, strict, concrete jungle type of thing.
Thank you. So that's great that you're actually introducing another concept that's not in the concept plan that staff was talking about, about this arts thing. That, you must realize, that or affordable housing or parkland, all of these uses of that land are something that a municipality can make happen, but pretty much nobody else, except maybe in the arts, you could have a private enterprise that was for the arts as well. But definitely, these are things that the municipality can make happen, and I'm just wondering if you're comparing the proposal with the reality of what it would have been had we not done anything, rather than comparing it with the former use, which was an abandoned school site, which is no longer the case.
Okay, so just to make sure I have that clear, the, can I get you to restate that, please?
When you're looking at what you would like to see on the site, you're thinking of a hypothetical future, the, what would, so I'm considering, how do you compare that? Are you comparing it with the present and recent past where it was an abandoned school site that was used as open space by the community? Did you take into account the fact that that reality ended when they decided to divest of the school, because it likely would have gone to a private developer had the municipality not intervened?
As far as the school's use in that place that private developed, I don't know what, again, anything's a possibility, it's an open for that. When the city, I understand that there was a petition or a movement in place for the city to purchase the parkland or to purchase the school, and given that that has happened, the parkland should be the most important priority moving forward with the development of this property.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Our second delegation this evening is Dawn and Hillary Richardson, who will appear before council again to speak to Information Report Number Three with respect to 671 Brock Street Site Configuration and Public Consultation Summary.
I'm grateful for the opportunity of speaking to you tonight, and I speak also for Hillary, who is unable to attend for health reasons. I am aware that the city planning department and councillors have devoted a significant amount of time and energy to this project, and I commend them. I would also like to tell the mayor and council what a wonderful job has been done in this city with affordable housing. Fifty years ago, I was a young doctor making house calls in, on Bay Street, Raglan Road, and Quebec Street, to miserable slums in a most depressing situation. Now I make house calls to Compton Street, bright, roomy houses with wonderful play areas for children. Congratulations, but we do need more affordable housing. In terms of the proposed construction, I feel that I can pass on comments that are the result of a survey of 26 families on Mack and Napier Street. The majority seem to believe that this is an opportunity to preserve the great recreational space available. It is a space presently used for children's play, dog walking, and leisure walking. It is a space that fits in with the ambience of the neighborhood, and it is important to our residents to preserve that. The idea of cramming two four-story structures and a small parcel of land is unacceptable to the majority of people that I have talked to. I would like to suggest that perhaps the affordable housing should come first, and that enough parkland space, 75%, be retained. Just like to mention that in the minutes of the public meeting, it was suggested that shadowing would not be a problem, but it will be for the community garden. Shadows of up to 30% of the garden would be covered in September in the afternoon if a 56-foot building was constructed in front of it. Finally, I would like to close, although I feel I just got started, with a dream. And I know that you, as councillors, you have to deal with the fiscal realities, and this may only be a dream, but my dream is this: close Napier Street, unite Churchill Park and the parkland, build on it if you need affordable housing, and perhaps a small community center, and let's have a really great park in this area. I think if we did that, private subscription might be available to assist with the financing, which I know is quite tight on this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, or Counselor Richardson?
Just one, how did you arrive at the 75% parkland number?
Well, I guess I could toss the question back. You suggested 55% in the proposal, is that correct?
That's what staff committed to back on the 6th, so.
And 75%, I understand, and I'm not absolutely sure of my source, is the amount of recreational space presently available at St. Joseph's School, which would include the parking and the grassy areas. So we really would be preserving what is there.
Thank you.
Counselor Neal.
Just quickly, so there isn't any confusion, I know you live in the neighborhood. Is it right that that parking lot is where there are basketball hoops currently, and it hasn't been used for parking probably in a decade or more? Is that accurate?
I do not honestly know how much parking went into that land, and I, so I can't accurately answer it. I do see children playing basketball now.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you. I'm really intrigued by this concept of closing that one block of Napier Street, like they did back in the day with Front Mac Street in Victoria Park. I love the Victoria Park's sort of double-block nature, and you forget that there used to be a street there because it's been, you know, it's been revoltous parkland, and actually it's being upgraded again right now. So I'm intrigued about that. Does that, if that happened, would that change your calculations on what percentage of the school site needs to be for non-housing needs? I'm just curious if that would, does that give us any wiggle room, in your opinion?
I think to really make it work, you want to have as much parkland as possible in the new site, and I stick with the figure 75%.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Our third and final delegation this evening is Alistair McLean, who will also speak to us with respect to 671 Brock Street.
I have a couple of slides, I don't know if those can go on the screen, or... Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I live at Max, 224 Max Street, adjacent to the former school, at 671 Brock. Yeah, there's a couple of slides. Sure. I'm just moving the iPad for a second. Yep. I have it for you. Was that made on, oh, no, gosh, no, it's gone. Did you make that on an Apple computer? On a Mac? No, it's a MISTOS, but I made it from a Mac. Okay. Which may not be proper for a Windows computer. That's okay, if someone doesn't like it. I'm sorry about that. Okay. So I live at 224 Max Street, adjacent to the former school. I've lived there for 24 years, and together with my wife, we brought up three children there. So my first point I'd like to make is that Williamsville has enjoyed a special relationship with the former school that has permitted us to use this yard as active or recreational park for over 50 years. This has been of great value, and there is value, I argue, in continuing this. My family has benefited from access to this space, and it made it much easier for us to bring up healthy and active children. The park also supports a wide range of activities. There are the obvious ones, of course, but in addition to those, I have also witnessed teenagers learning to cycle and unicycle, young adults playing basketball late into the evening in the summer, children spending hours hitting tennis balls off the wall, teams completely dressed in white playing cricket, teenagers on the swings long after dark talking, and even a few adults who sneak in and swing when nobody else is looking. It's a highly utilized and highly prized space. So the second point I'd like to make is that the proposed development will actually reduce the amount of active park, and that is because 75% of the school has been used as park. Developing 55% of the property as public park represents actually in real terms a reduction in active parkland of 20%. This seems to many in the community to be unfair, even though the city has bought the property and is extending the amount of parkland in the area. It seems unfair because we have less parkland than any other district in the city. And to illustrate how little parkland we have, I calculated how many school equivalent areas, so that is areas equal to the former school, that we would have to convert into parks to bring our per capita parkland up to the level of other districts. To achieve parity with King Scott Rido, we would need to add one school of this size. To achieve parity with Sidnum, we would actually have to add 17. To achieve the city's target, we would need to add 22. To achieve parity with Portsmouth to the west of us, we would need to add 23. To achieve parity with Kingstown, we would need to add a staggering 66 schools like this. When one studies the parkland distribution, one can begin to understand a reaction to the proposed changes, even though the city is actually increasing the amount of park. The proposed changes reduce the amount of active parkland in a district that is already part-poor. We have the same per capita land area, parkland area in Williamsville as New York City, just slightly above. Some suggestions, I'm in favor of preserving the ratio of parkland to building at the 75-25 level, that's the status quo. That will allow us to continue to use the space as we have for over 25 years. And my second suggestion is that although there is a compelling case for increasing the amount of parkland and actually using the whole property as park, because of the pressing need for affordable housing, I would be in favor of building mixed affordable housing on 25% on the area, so that is the area that's currently occupied by the school. And thirdly, to achieve both of these goals, which are priorities for the city, without changing the character of the neighborhood, I also believe that there's simply not enough room, not enough space to incorporate private housing, and other funding models should be vigorously pursued. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I do know about the affordable housing that's proposed and the very tight, tight budget that they will be using, so I'm very interested to know what you mean with the statement, "I propose other funding models should be vigorously pursued." I'd love to know what your ideas on those are.
Yeah, I just don't think that, yeah, I just don't think that the idea of using or selling part of the property privately to fund the affordable housing is going to work, because it's going to change, drastically change our neighborhood. I mean, that's the point I'm really making there, and I think the fund, that whole approach, I think, has to be examined very, very closely.
Deputy Mayor Stroud.
I'd like to follow along this line, because I think this is actually the central problem with this file, is that the community doesn't understand what financial models are available to us. We only have one in front of us, and that is to cut off a piece for the private market. So you've opened the door to other models, and I guess you don't, you haven't done the research on them, but that you would be open to them because they don't involve a drastic increase of density in a low-density neighborhood, right? That's what you're saying?
Yeah.
So, and I just want to confirm that you are aware that when we purchase a school, it has to be at full market value of what that would be in the current zoning, which is residential, right?
Yeah.
So that's, that's.
So I'm just going to interrupt for a sec. So there needs to be a clear question and then a clear answer. It can't be a series of...
So I'd just like to pursue a little bit further. What theoretical areas, other than selling to the private sector, could there be in the site?
Oh, to raise funds?
To raise funds to reduce the cost of the affordable housing piece, yes, and parkland.
Well, maybe you could spend less on the affordable housing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yes, just a quick comment and then some questions. I appreciate the equation you worked out, I keep staring at it. I'm a drama teacher and a teacher librarian. At some point in time, we need to sit down so you can walk me through that wonderful equation. I understand you're a physics professor, and that you've applied that statistical analysis, which I really appreciate, to this particular problem. The figures that you used for the per capita, I'm just curious, did you use, I believe, the 2011 census numbers?
Yeah, so I used, all these numbers came from the city report, the 16298, that was presented here on the 6th of September. And that makes a compelling case, but if one includes, for example... And, and that makes a compelling case, but if one includes, for example, the number of students that, that live in the area, it makes an even much more compelling case. I originally thought that that wouldn't change those numbers very much, but it really does.
Yes, and are you aware that the OMB instructed the city to start taking consideration of, of the students in an OMB hearing?
For this calculation, I decided to use numbers that the city has provided us with, so there will be no question.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you and thank you for your presentation. It was interesting to hear how much that space behind your house is used for various activities.
Right.
I'm wondering if you're aware of how much Churchill Park is used. Is it used at a similar rate for similar activities?
No, Churchill Park is really quite a different space. It's a large garden and it's a great place. Many of our neighbors have been married there, for example. And it's a great place to, to put up a slack line between two trees or, but the, the usage of, of this two-six, six-seventy-one Brock is really quite different, as I indicated.
Okay, thank you. And I, sorry, I lost my second question, so I'm going to let that one go.
Thank you. Counselor Bohm.
Thank you, Your Worship. Two, two quick questions. First one, would you be against the mixed model of affordable housing, some parkland and then essentially some private development in other areas of the city that had, I guess, more available parkland?
In other areas?
Yes, like not in this specific area, but in other areas of the city. I, I guess to follow with that is, at some point, if we're going to buy parkland or other schools in the future, we've got to start somehow putting money back into that pot, which is essentially empty now. So we have to find some way, and as Counselor Stroud mentioned earlier, we kind of only have so many tools at our disposal.
Yeah, it's my understanding, though, that a lot of money has been put into this parkland front from, from downtown. And I guess I just don't see, I, I don't see where that's being spent.
Okay, and then to, to follow that up, I guess, you, you mentioned, I guess, the, the fact that you have the least amount of parkland. But you also maybe, when you look at that equation, might have some of the nicest parks and some of the most developed parks in the city. So I guess in, in, in that opinion, we need to look, would you agree that we need to look at more than just the piece of land itself? Because I can think of a few parks where there's lots of land there, but there's, there's not really a whole bunch on there. So I mean, you can take a cornfield, turn it into a park and not develop it. So that, in my mind, really skews that equation when you're, when you're just looking at it that way.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I mean, if I had more time, I'd really say a lot about how, how much our neighborhood appreciates what the city is doing with refurbishing a lot of parks, particularly, and we're very excited about Victoria Park, what's going to happen there, City Park, I like what's being done in City Park. And, and I agree, you have to look at actually what's available in, in each park, that's for sure. But I think the numbers are really compelling, i- if you look at them. I mean, I just hadn't quite appreciated how, how much we were down at the parkland service level, right on the end of the curve. And there's really nowhere for us to go. You know, we, we, the, the amount of land that's available is fixed. We can't change that. We can only change the, the usage of the land within Williamsville because we're really bounded by other areas on each side. So I think using, using areas like this is really, really vital. I think you can make a compelling case for really using the whole property as parkland. I mean, that's what I tried to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing no other questions from council, thank you very much. So we have no further delegations this evening, but we do have one briefing from Brian Dodo, RGD Principal Strategic Designer, BM Dodo Strategic Design, provide a briefing with respect to information report number four, Kingston Celebration of Canada's Sesquicentennial. So I'll ask Commissioner of Community Services Lanny Hurdle to provide introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. You will recall that a few months ago, we brought a report to council on the Sesquicentennial celebration, which included a number of events, initiatives to be coming up in the next year. So we have retained the services of Brian Dodo from BM Dodo Strategic Design to help us with visual identity and, and really a marketing initiative for this particular celebration. So Brian is here tonight to unveil the logo that will be used for the Sesquicentennial. So we wanted to have a chance to do this with council first. It's pretty exciting. And we will be using this logo on our communication. So we wanted to be able to start as soon as possible as well, considering that two thousand and seventeen is only a few months away. So with that, I'll pass it over to Brian. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and present to council. Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Worship. Like most other projects that we take on, we always start all of our projects with a little bit of research. This particular project was interesting in that it's a historical project, so we're celebrating what Canada was, what it is, and where Canada could be. And when you're talking about one hundred and fifty years of Canada, you can't say that without talking about Kingston. So what we started off doing was just looking at what Canada was back then. And in fact, the photograph in the top-left corner is actually from Confederation in eighteen-sixty-seven. And of course, the one on the left is from some of the concerts that happened. And then we also had, we looked at what has been happening in Kingston. It's always been a vibrant community. And what the city has become from what it used to be and some of the improvements. Some have been really positive, like for example, when you look at the Matello Tower there compared to what it looks like now on Confeder. We also looked at Fort Henry and at other places. We looked at what happened when Canada celebrated its hundred years in nineteen-sixty-seven and this particular logo is what was adopted. In fact, that's how the latest one that's being used for Canada was derived from, which is that. So what we wanted to do is find a way of creating something unique for Kingston that also takes into consideration that the logo that we're developing would have to work with the Canada one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. And so this is how some of the work has been applied. We also looked at what other communities were doing to celebrate. So some communities have just adopted what Canada one hundred and fiftieth was doing and added a touch of their own community. And of course, when you look at the history of Canada, that history is not complete without Kingston. And sort of all of the national experiences that Canadians have, have to do a lot, owe a lot to Kingston, including our national identity. Even when you look at the history from Sayjonee and the history of Hawke, all start from Canada, Kingston. So the identity that we're proposing, in fact, in fact, that we're unveiling today is the identity that we're going to be using to celebrate Canada's one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. And so the idea behind this identity is, A, maintaining what our current identity for Kingston looks like at the moment, which incorporates the city hall, and maybe add some excitement to it, make it more fun, take the maple leaf, which was originally designed in Kingston, and again, make it, make it a little bit more vibrant. So the identity itself is meant to be vibrant, exciting, to celebrate that moment in our history. And this is how that identity would work again as the Canada one hundred and fiftieth. All of the colors we're using are borrowed from that Canada one hundred and fiftieth identity. That's what it would look like horizontal. And with all projects that we do, an identity has to be used in so many ways. So we wanted to look at how it would work in black and white, how it would look when it's in monotone, applied when it's reversed out of backgrounds, and on Twitter or any other applications. What we also want to try and do is we start to apply the identity is to show what Canada's, what Kingston's pasts look like and what Kingston's future looks like. So I guess look at the contrast between those two periods. That's how the identity would look if it's on a lapel pin, or on street banners on, on the Kingston streets, as a tattoo, or as a T-shirt. Ladies and gentlemen, the identity for Canada's one hundred and fiftieth for Kingston.
Looks great, thank you. Any questions from council? Okay. Thumbs up all around. Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on, we have, next on the agenda is petitions. Are there any petitions to present? Counselor Neal.
Yes, I have a petition that in the last four weeks has seven hundred and sixty-two written, names, two hundred and seven online for a grand total of nine hundred and sixty-nine. And I will read the petition out. Whereas a park and recreation analysis of the twenty-eleven, of twenty-eleven indicates that Sunnyside is one of the most efficient neighborhoods in terms of parkland per capita, and whereas the population of the area has increased significantly since then, and whereas the provincial policy statement calls for a full range and equitable distribution of publicly accessible parklands, and whereas there are no other sites for increasing parkland in this neighborhood, and whereas the city purchased the Saint Joseph, Saint Mary School site primarily for parkland, and whereas seventy-five percent of the site is currently open recreational space, and whereas this site has been extensively used by the community during summer vacation and non-school hours. Now therefore, city council be requested that any further use of this site provide for the same amount of public open space as has been enjoyed by the community for almost seventy years. And the petition continues, and I'd like to submit the petition duly signed by nine hundred and sixty-nine people, and the number is increasing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So... Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. We do have a procedural rule that applause is not permitted in council chambers. So I appreciate that show of support, but I will ask you to respect our procedural bylaw forward. Thank you. Are there any other petitions to present? Okay, seeing none, we have no motions of congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolences, and speedy recovery. We have no deferred motions, so I will ask for report number ninety-nine from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Cannon, seconded by Counselor Allen, that report number ninety-nine from the Chief Administrator Officer consent be received and adopted.
So there are six clauses. Would anyone, like any of those clauses separated? I believe, is it F that's been separated for Counselor Bohm's pecuniary interest? Seeing no other separations, then we will vote on items A through E first. So item A is a word of contract janitorial services for Kingston Police Headquarters, seven oh five Division Street. Item B is a word of contract supply and delivery of cleaning supplies for the city of Kingston. Item C, Kingston Solar LP Samsung Renewable Energy Project Community Benefit Program Fund. Item D, approval of an amendment to heritage property tax refund eighty-six Beverly Street. Item E, municipal council blanket support resolution, solar photovoltaic projects made under the provincial feed and tear program three-point-one notice to proceed. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Item F is approval of a clean water and wastewater fund application. We will call the vote. And that carries. Report number one hundred from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor George, that report number one hundred from the Chief Administrator Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
So the first clause is Part Five Ontario Heritage Act. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. Let me just pull that back up on my laptop here so I can, because I'm going to quote part of it and give you the numbers. So here we are. Sorry, I had to flip back to the agenda. I only have one screen. Yeah, so, yeah, so we have here two reports on a, on the same subject, and we're dealing with three-eleven. Report number three-eleven is the one that's referenced in this, this number one, right, of this report one hundred. So that is from September sixth and was deferred. And, and you see another, later, later in agenda, you will see another report. It's the next one on the agenda called Heritage Next Steps. But just dealing with this number one, I'd like to draw your attention to the, looks like it's page thirty-five here. Basically, there is some of the, I guess I can finish my preface and then I have to find the language. Some of the advice that we're getting from our legal department that's, that's in report three-eleven is, is also incorporated in report three-forty. And, and therefore, there's an overlap, but there is some, it remains in, in the deferred motion, three-eleven, recommendation from three-eleven that is problematic, and that's what I'd like to address. It's the very last two paragraphs of that report. Do you have it there? So the very last two paragraphs on page forty of this report are the, are sort of related to the reason it was deferred, and I'd like to address them now. So there, the first paragraph describes an amendment which, which happened at the Heritage Committee and was not passed in the bylaw because of legal advice that it was contrary. That last paragraph is where it says that it's contrary. So a recommendation for an approval of Berryfield Heritage Conservation District Plan while also adding in an amendment is contrary. So that is the part that is not carried forward in report three-forty and the part that I have a problem with because we, that was what sort of precipitated the request for a survey of current heritage practices in other municipalities because they are actually doing precisely things similar to that. So we've got that report. It's later on in the agenda as well. And, and it seems to indicate that at least, at very least, it's controversial what, what is being said in this report on that last paragraph. And it's not clear that, that that last paragraph is in, it's not in full context, not clear that it need, needs to, well, essentially, I am arguing against accepting this recommendation from this report because of that last paragraph. And I'm asking that my colleagues vote this report, this recommendation down, and then we can move to report three-forty and vote it in. And it, it would actually, it describes, as you will see, a way to deal with these applications in a, in a legal framework, incorporating legal's advice that would also incorporate the valuable input from the Heritage Committee. So that's why I'm going to vote against this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yes, I appreciate the thorough report that we received. I just have to say that I think if, if all of those references to that multitude of other communities and how they practice heritage would suggest that in fact, one size does not fit all. And the reality is, I know that there are a series of things in the legislation... And the reality is, I know that there are a series of things in the legislation that probably are thou shalt nots, but there are very few of those. And the assumption should be that, given the wide breadth of diversity across the province in the way that communities choose to establish committees, whether they be specifically for districts or for municipalities, suggests that the communities have a lot of leeway under the legislation. It isn't a cookie cutter approach to things, and therefore, I'm not sure that the kind of somewhat wholesale alteration of what may in fact be best practices in Kingston needs to happen, because best practices are very diverse practices, and there isn't a single municipality that, I mean, there are municipalities we can gather good ideas from, but I don't see any kind of homogeneous kind of interpretation of the Heritage Act. And frankly, I think over the years, our Heritage Committee with community representatives has done an excellent job, and I think we need to continue to support that approach and not try to undermine the ability for them to conduct business, which I think overall has been conducted very well.
Thank you. Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I have a question to staff that if we turned down Part 1, how would that affect the process moving forward if we then approve Part 2, Heritage Next Steps?
Mr. McClellan.
Through you, your worship. With respect to Counselor, I don't see the two as actually being contradictory, because the two ideas are sourced from different authorities. The Part 5 description stating, sorry, stating that in section 41, 42, 4.1, it says you may not require somebody to go is a separate authority from the authority under our own bylaw that's being used in the other report. In the other report, it says that the Director of Planning has the right to review and forward those matters which are complex. When we did the survey, we found about two-thirds of municipalities do a system like that, though Counselor quite correctly points out, there's a great diversity in how they do it, there isn't a central model. So it would be my understanding that the two reports aren't contradictory, that the proposed resolution and the proposed procedure accommodates use of the committee in matters where they are useful and it's of importance to have the matter go through them, is done through a consultation through the authority of the existing heritage procedural bylaw as opposed to the statute.
So, just to clarify, though, and I, Counselor Shell, my apologies if I misinterpreted your question. I think the question was, do the two recommendations have to both be passed in order for us to move forward with the new process? If we voted down the first one, would that make the second one moot? Can it coexist on its own? I think that that was what Counselor Shell was asking.
I think they can, but in the sense that they're not contradictory. The second one also includes the advice that this is what the position is under the statute. It's just that we're using another authority, our own bylaw and the delegation authority to allow for consultation through the committee as opposed to requiring every applicant to go through as a matter of requirement. And this has been the pattern in the interim, is that the matters are coming through as consultations, and the advice and the contribution of the committee is being received that way.
Thank you. That actually clarifies it for me as much as this rather complicated subject has. So I can support this. This has been very controversial, there's no doubt about it, and I do a lot of thinking about it in terms of the report that we received from staff and the vast number of conservation districts that have been created recently throughout the province. So I do think this is, there is an element of flux in all of this. And in the City of Kingston, before staff were as involved as they are now, we were pretty short on designations, and we still are, till staff got involved and said, we must move this forward. And we have pushed forward on the conservation districts. We have also hired professional staff, and that's one of the things I've thought about. Over the years, much of this work has been done by people with experience and self-taught knowledge, and we have started over the years in all cities to professionalize the understanding of the Heritage Act, of heritage, and I want us to move forward in this direction, that we have people with knowledge, but we now have a very professional staff to interpret the knowledge that individuals have in an advisory way in the focus of their professionalism and their training. So I feel that this is what we're moving toward, moving forward with this, accepting the Part 5, understanding, these are huge numbers that we're talking about. We're not talking about a few designations anymore. We're talking about large conservation districts with hundreds of houses in them, some modern, some heritage, and staff have to be able to focus on all of them in terms of the policy that's been presented in a conservation district. So to me, this is part of moving forward toward the future, toward having a staff that can do more designations, which we very much need in this city. We have a lot of unprotected buildings because the volunteer workers just haven't had the time and energy to do the work. So to me, this is all part of the professionalization of protecting our heritage because it is now part of the culture of the City of Kingston. What used to be a fight to save buildings has now become more of, of course, we're going to save the buildings, so how are we going to do it? So I'm quite happy to support this and the Heritage Next Steps, which I think folds the committee in very well with its expertise and advice, along with the fact that we do have professionally trained staff now. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote then on Clause 1. And that carries by a vote of seven to six. Clause 2, Heritage Next Steps. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. So, yes, this is an excellent report. I'd like to commend the CAO and the staff involved in it for basically finding a win-win. It's a win-win because it is allowing the, it says right in the report that both the mandatory statutory applications that require heritage permits come to Heritage Committee for deliberation and possible approval, which has always been the case, that's following the Heritage Act, and that was never the controversial element, that continues. The other one is a way to get the non-statutory items such as alterations in a heritage district, Part 5, which was the subject of the previous report as well, a way to get those to the committee for that extra expert advice and for the public to have a chance to address, including, very important piece, the applicant themselves. So if you don't have it coming to the committee, and you know what the committee setting is like, the applicant isn't, is not, doesn't have a chance to interact with the committee, the committee members with this expertise, Counselor Shell was mentioning, don't have an opportunity to give their expert advice, but it's still, as Counselor Shell was just saying, flows through staff. So flows, there's only one report rather than two, as has been the recent practice. This, as I understand from talking to the Commissioner, is an important element to create efficiencies. Let's not forget, that's how we started this whole heritage transition process, was to find, to streamline the process in some way, both for staff but also for the applicant. So the applicant, if they're asking for an alteration in a heritage district, they're not required to come to the committee, as pointed out by legal staff. We put that language into the report. The items are going to be commented on in advance of the heritage meeting in that five-day window. That information will be incorporated in the report by staff, and only one report instead of two, and then deliberated at the committee, and anything that comes out of that, if it's in the non-statutory side, comes in a separate section in the report to council as advice. It's like, we recommend that you, you know, do this in this way, that you support, you've seen the language in the report. It is not, we approve this, or we suggest that you deny this. Like, it is separate language from the Part 4 alterations of the statutory things. So that, in my mind, is a way of incorporating legal's cautionary tale about what happens in an OMB situation when you've had involvement from the Citizen Committee, when it wasn't mandated or wasn't statutory, wasn't required, and how that could open us up to legal challenges. I think that we could point to this exact new process, once it's in bylaw, and say, actually, everybody was fully made aware of the requirements under the Heritage Act, and nothing was done, there was no, the committee didn't approve anything, they just recommended to council that they look at these elements of the heritage property in question. I think it's a win-win. I really look forward to trying it at the committee. It'll be my job to make sure that everybody understands what it means at the committee level, it'll be my job to make sure that we continue to make the input from the committee in a way that's legal, that will not open us up to any kind of litigation. So I'm looking forward to trying this. I thank the CAO for the work put into it, and I ask for council support as well, because I think we all know, we'd rather just be doing the job of protecting heritage rather than, you know, the back and forth about the best way to do it. I think we just need to all be on the same page, and I think that's what this does. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on Clause 2, Heritage Next Steps. And that carries. Number 3, Public Parking Facility Agreement with Homestead Land Holdings. Counselor Ossanik.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I have a question to staff. Would there be any consequences if we waited until after the OMB appeal to approve this change tonight?
Ms. Kidd.
Through you, your worship. I think delaying advancing this development would be a bit of a risk, because we fully anticipate that Homestead will be presenting some modification and developing the two lots that were originally discussed. So we'd be looking at 270 parking spaces coming out of the inventory.
Counselor Ossanik, you have the floor. Is there anything else?
There's, well, we have the OMB appeal. We don't know how long that will be, but anything can happen at the OMB appeal. And I just don't think that the Byron parking lot is the best place for the parking lot. It's hard to say for the timing. If the Homestead, you know, land development will come back to Planning Committee before the OMB appeal or vice versa, I just think that approving this tonight's a bit the cart before the horse. And, well, I can move a deferral, and if it wins, it wins, if it loses, it loses, but for me, I think I'd like to defer this until after the OMB appeal is decided.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor from Counselor Ossanik to defer this item until the OMB appeal is settled.
For the 223 Princess Street, the Capitol.
The OMB appeal for 223 Princess Street. We're just copying that down, Mr. Clerk? Do we need that in writing? So is there a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Stroud. Debate is with respect to time or place, and that's fair game. Counselor Shell.
Does staff have any idea how long an OMB appeal is taking these days?
Ms. Egna.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. So typically what we're seeing now, there's a backlog at the Ontario Municipal Board for larger type hearings, which this would fall under that category you're looking at. Usually, a minimum of six months before you have a pre-hearing gathering to come and look at the issue to determine whether it's going to go forward or not. In terms of actual booking of a hearing date, again, for a hearing of this size and complexity, you're typically looking at like a whole week of a hearing, and we're not seeing dates anywhere any sooner than 12 to 14 months from the time that the pre-hearing is decided. So it's quite a lengthy process.
Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
Yes, I take the chair, and you may speak to time or place.
Thank you. I will try to be very respectful of the rules about what we can and cannot speak to. I am going to speak specifically to timing. I think, given the answer that we've heard from staff, that this timing could, is very uncertain and could be quite lengthy, I think it's very unwise for us to be able to postpone a very important issue for our downtown for such an indeterminate length of time.
Point of order. I believe you were talking to the merits of the vote rather than to time. And that's the first time I've said point of order in this term.
Thank you, Counselor Neal. If I was the judge, I would say sustained. Yes, he's done anyways, so.
I have no further comments, Deputy Mayor.
I would ask everyone to not state the merits of, for or against a deferral, when you're only talking to whether we would like to change the time that's in the motion, because I'm sure that with the controversial nature, that people might want to give arguments one way or the other, and we don't want that. Counselor Allen.
Chair, and see that Counselor Allen has his hand up. Thank you very much. Counselor Allen.
This question is, again, about timing. I'm wondering if we have any idea when these Homestead proposals are coming to Planning Committee for review.
Ms. Egna.
Thank you, and through you. So the point we're at right now with Homestead is, if they've gone away from having discussions with staff as part of the first round of technical comments of their submission, and as part of the determination of making some significant changes to the buildings based on staff feedback, we're still waiting for them to come back with a resubmission of what their next proposal of building's going to be. So I don't have a date at this time, but certainly that would be subject to another statutory public meeting, based on my anticipation of buildings changing quite a bit from what we saw the first time. It would require another public meeting, and then the process would unfold from there. So we're several, several months before anything would really be coming forward to this council for a decision.
Thank you. Debating to time, I'm not sure I could, can commit to deferring for the length of time associated with the OMB appeal, but maybe we can find an interim time to defer for consideration or conversation. That might be shorter or more reasonable where we can then consider it again.
Counselor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. You mentioned 14 months as kind of the minimum. What is the maximum? My concern to time is just in tying these two together, that we could essentially be hamstringing ourselves in the future, because we don't really know when the other proposals are going to come through. So 14 months to kind of, I guess, what's the maximum you've seen in your experience?
Ms. Egna.
Thank you, and through you. So after the hearing concludes, then you have to wait a period of time to have the written submission from the board member that presides over the hearing itself, which can sometimes take two, four, six months. It really depends on the backlog and how many hearings that board member has presided over, so it's really hard for me to say, but the experience that we're seeing lately is that it's. is that it's becoming quite a lengthy process from start to finish, once you enter into an appeal.
So we could realistically be looking at upwards of even 20 months by tying these together, potentially?
Potentially.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Neal.
I'm going to avoid speaking in order not to debate this, although there's a lot of debate going on.
So, so as the chair, I think it's perfectly reasonable to speak to timing. It's the nature of the timing that is being debated. So I think that's fair game. So if someone moves beyond that, then I will rule you out of order, but I think everything that's been said so far is perfectly fair. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you. Before I speak, I'd like to ask a question to timing, but it's actually a procedural question. If we were going to change the timing from what was proposed by Counselor Ossanik, would it be in this motion to defer, or would it need a new motion to defer?
Mr. Clerk, can I see you for one? So a motion to amend would be in order, but it needs to be a proper motion to amend that would need to be in writing.
Okay. So let me just, to timing, just list what has been said, not the arguments, but just the elements that have been mentioned that affect timing. There's the OMB appeal on 223 Princess Street. There's the planning process for the Homestead proposals on Lower Queen Street. There's also the ever-changing nature of our parking supply and demand. That's at committee right now, actually. So there, that's at least three elements that affect timing, and we're just speaking about when we should be making this decision on this particular project. So I would say that today is not the right time, and I am probably going to write out an amendment, if I may, to propose a shorter timeframe than what was proposed by Counselor Ossanik. Do we need a recess, or should I just?
I'm hoping you can write that out really quickly.
Yeah, and then actually, I won't need to speak any further, because it'll be self-explanatory from the.
So start writing, Deputy Mayor, and we'll wait for it.
Just that the time of deferral will be changed to read defer for six months.
Okay, so there is a motion to amend the existing motion to defer, to change the wording from until after the OMB appeal for 223 Princess Street is settled, to motion to defer for six months. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor McLaren. Debate is with respect, so, boy. So that is not, that is not a motion to defer, so you just have to speak to the motion to amend. So only with respect to changing the motion to defer from until the OMB appeal is settled to six months. That is the window for which you can provide comments. Counselor Holland.
Question, thank you, your worship. So the rationale for this amendment, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm not clear. Can we have the rationale again?
Maybe, can I, I haven't spoken to it yet. Do you want me to just do that?
Actually, yes, that's true. Deputy Mayor, if you wish to speak to the motion to amend.
Yeah, so the rationale is actually more specific, but I thought it was important to give, at Counselor Ossanik's suggestion, a specific time, so that we can wrap our head around what the delay would be. Six months is not a long period of time when we're talking about a major multimillion-dollar parking garage project. It allows for the possibility of the Homestead project to come to planning, or at least advance in the planning process, surely, in that time. That's one of the pieces that we'll change. The OMB one may still be pending, but we've sort of heard from several members that that timeframe for the OMB is too long for a deferral of this nature, and therefore, sort of, I guess out of thin air, choosing a timeframe that would make it highly likely that the Homestead proposal could come to planning, because that's what precipitated this report in the first place, right? It was actually not the OMB appeal at 223 Princess Street, but the removal of the parking agreement, the parking, constructional parking agreement that Homestead had entered into, removal of that that precipitated the report. But Homestead is still proceeding with the planning process, and therefore, six months will give us some more information for when it's time to make the decision.
Anybody else to the motion to amend? Seeing no, we will call the question on the motion to amend. Please vote. Still one person vote. And that carries by a vote of nine to four. So on the existing motion to defer as now amended, anyone else wishes to speak to time or place? Seeing none, we will call the vote. And that carries by a vote of eight to five. Okay, moving on to report number 101 from Planning Committee.
Oops, thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present report number 101 from the Planning Committee, and ask that it be considered by council. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Shell, seconded by Counselor Neal, that report number 101 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there are three clauses. Clause 2 has been separated for Counselor George's pecuniary interest. Seeing no other separations, we will vote on Item 1 and 3 then together. Item 1 is approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment, 99 Chatham Street. Item 3, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment, 256 Elmwood Street. And that carries. Item 2, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment, 1024 Catarac Way Woods And that carries. Report number 102 from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee.
I have that before me, duly moved, not yet seconded.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Turner, that report number 102 from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
So there's just the one-item accessibility standards policy. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. I guess, question first, through you. The key changes that affect the City of Kingston, one of them is expanded training requirements. So it means that all employees of the city and volunteers who provide goods and services to the public would be required to have the expanded training. Does that refer to members of council?
Ms. Saltikin.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it is, all council committees, volunteers. I'm working with HR, and we will be rolling that out in the new year.
Thank you. And then, secondly, under the Act, the AODA Act, so we're required to meet the accessibility standards through the regulation. When it comes to, I guess, as we've just indicated, members of council, and I think especially the emphasis on customer service for the City of Kingston, as part of that training, is there a component of, could you, I guess, first of all, just expand on what the training involves?
So there's general training for volunteers. The new training would be, there's three different categories. One is the accessible customer service training. The other one is the Ontario Human Rights. And the other one is the general requirements under the Integrated Accessibility Standards Regulation.
So further to that, is there a component that involves anti-oppression training in terms of ensuring an understanding of the stigma associated with, or the context, I suppose, for providing customer service in a way that ensures the dignity of the individuals who we're serving as members of the city?
Yes, so there's sensitivity training. Is that what you were requesting? Yes.
Okay, so we will call the vote. Item 1.
I have a question, yes, I have a question. My understanding is the requirement for training is provincial legislative requirement, provincially legislated. It would also affect me as a registered nurse at KGH. Is it, if it's the same training, would I have to undergo both sessions?
I believe so, yes. So you require the training for the city. We have to keep record of all our training for staff, volunteers, et cetera. So we would have to undertake the same training.
Thank you. Just a quick comment on the section of the, of the report that talks to the barrier, creation of barrier-free, designing barrier-free spaces. I just want to point out the importance of this approach to accessibility is very, will affect the way that work is done in the city in the future, but it's also a very crucial part of accessibility in principle, is founded on the concept of autonomy, autonomy for the individual. An individual with special needs or mobility issues will, the best practice is to remove all barriers, not to necessarily help them every step of the way, but to actually remove the barriers so that they can do it independently. And I think that principle can't be stated too much. I think it's important that we understand that's the reason for the barrier-free policy, and I'm happy that it's in there. Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote. And that carries. We have nothing from Committee of the Whole tonight. We do have several information reports. If you have any questions, just raise your hand when I get to them. Number 1, current heritage conservation district practice in other Ontario municipalities. Number 2, tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of August 2016. Number 3, 671 Brock Street site configuration and public consultation summary. Counselor Neal.
Yes, I have just a couple of questions for, I see two of the four staff people who were at that meeting are here tonight, so I just wanted to, to ask them some, some questions since many of us were not able to be there. First off, I want to say I appreciate your report. I think it was, it was candid, and it did capture the essence of the discussion at that public meeting. Would you say that, that what I, the petition that I read out earlier reflects the, we never have a consensus at public meetings, but would represent the majority opinion that we heard at the public meeting on October, I believe, 3rd?
Mr. Laban.
Through you, your worship. Certainly at the public meeting, I think it's fair to say that the majority of the persons who spoke at the meeting had concerns about the size of the parkland as their main item. They would have liked to have the parkland larger, and even though the purpose of the meeting was to talk about the land configuration, certainly the land uses became a focus of the meeting, and most persons that spoke at the meeting were, would have liked to have seen the parkland larger as their main focus.
Thank you. And my impression, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that there were virtually dozen people, dozens of people speaking against the concept of the private, say, the private development aspect, but I don't recall any single person who spoke, speaking against the concept of affordable housing. Was that your recollection as well?
Mr. Laban.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a fair assessment. Certainly, there was considerable concern about the overall issues of intensification and size of development on both types of housing projects, but in terms of, the main focus of the public comments were generally in favor of the affordable housing, and many people spoke against the private market block.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Yes, I'd like to ask for staff's comments on two of the items brought up by the delegations. The first being, other financing available if the private sale is removed from, theoretically, of course, removed from the picture. Are there any, the delegation wasn't able to answer the question, are there any, to your knowledge, Mr. Laban, are there any other options available to us, or to any other staff that might know?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So before we brought the report to council with the recommendation to utilize some of the proceeds from sale of a portion of the property, we did consider how this could be financed, so it's not that we didn't give it any thought, and we just threw this option out. You know, there are various reviews that took place, including affordable housing, and how we could actually have the funds available to make this work, and of course, a concern of replenishing our parkland reserve funds, which we know is currently depleted. So we did look at other options. We know that fundraising, when it comes to municipalities, is not sincerely a popular thing. We've had experience in the past with that. So we wouldn't sincerely suggest that council relies strictly on fundraising for the acquisition or the development that would need to take place. So we have taken a look at options for financing, and this is by far the best option and the most secure option.
Thank you. My other question has to do with the other innovation that was brought up by a delegation, and that is the idea of closing Napier Street and converting some of that land to parkland to, and to join the two Churchill parks in this future park. What implications does that have to the various departments, and is it something that is, that we could discuss as an option?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, I think primarily we would want to involve our traffic division group, because any street closure would have to be looked at in terms of potential impacts in traffic flow. Um... flow. So I think that would be the first step in terms of where we would start to have that conversation.
Councillor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, just looking through the summarized comments from the public consultation, I would just like to have staff comment on a couple of items. One, I can't pull it right up, but talks about the future of land use when it comes to schools, school sites, properties becoming available to the city, and how that's dealt with on a case-by-case basis at the city. But then also, I guess, what we've just been discussing, financing and the replenishment of the parkland reserve fund. So if we could maybe perhaps have comment on those two issues together, as in, I guess, what I'm asking is, would the case-by-case basis of other school site assessments and proposals be based on what we have remaining in the parkland reserve fund?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the review of sites as they become available, one is, we would want to do, first of all, I should add that when we look at the option of school sites, we will be looking at them in a more comprehensive way, meaning that we know we can't, or the city can't afford to purchase every single school site that are going to be coming on the market. So we will be looking at that and providing council with some recommendation on which sites might be more strategic from a community perspective. In terms of the questions around what kind of land uses, definitely, I think that if we are going to bring a recommendation forward for council to acquire property, it should include some form of public use. So it doesn't mean the entire property has to be used for public use, but it has, or should, or has to include some form of public use. So it could be in part parkland, it could be in part affordable housing, because we know that we are always trying to find additional sites. It could be also in part, depending on the financial situation and the financial structure, include other alternatives, like the ones that we're suggesting tonight in terms of selling a portion of the site. But of course, that would have to be reviewed on a case-by-case and depending on where that site is located.
Any other questions? Seeing, oh, sorry. Councillor Cannon and then Councillor Hutchinson.
Thank you, through you. If you were going to support this, support this because we're purchasing green space, which is fantastic, and supporting affordable housing, which is great, and recouping some of our costs, which is also a good thing, what level of certainty do we have that we're actually going to get a reasonable amount? So let's say, for example, if I supported this, and it turns out that we don't get a lot of money for the parkland, which was kind of our goal, and it sells for peanuts, that would kind of be counterproductive. What level of certainty do we have that we're going to recoup? Because that's kind of the main goal of what we're doing.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we have engaged or are engaging a real estate company, and we are getting an appraisal done. We do know, obviously, based on some preliminary conversations with the real estate agent, that this is a desirable area in the city. It is close to downtown, close to university, so it's an area that is obviously high in demand. So we have some preliminary information, obviously, from the real estate agent, but we are getting an appraisal, and we wouldn't have recommended this to council if we didn't believe that the city wasn't going to be able to sell it for an appropriate amount, which would make a difference at the end of the day in terms of recuperating some of the costs.
Would there ever be an instance where if we didn't receive a reasonable amount, that we could opt to not sell it? Or are we committing to fully selling it to any person with any amount of money that it would sell for?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I think it depends on the site and on its location. There could be some areas where we don't anticipate, or we think that the value of the land could be very low, depending on the area of the city, and that's something we would take into consideration and provide to council as part of our recommendation. So I don't want to, you know, speak of future sites, as I haven't done any analysis yet, but we would take that into consideration for sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Hutchinson.
Thank you, your worship. Just, first of all, perhaps a small question. It says in the report that council's comments were clear and the intent was to ensure at least 50% of the property be utilized for parkland purpose. I don't think it's nitpicking to say that, I think the commitment from the commissioner to direct questions from myself is 55%. Seems to me I remember that very clearly.
So what's your question, Councillor?
The report says 50% will be parkland, but the commitment at the council meeting was 55, and I don't want to get all hung up on what the commitment is, but I'd like to know. What I remember is the commissioner said 55%.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, what is being, what is in the council report is 55%. The conversation, obviously, at council was an indication that council wanted to see more than 50%. So the concept plan that was endorsed, which you have at Exhibit B, does show 55 as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because it does say 50 here. Okay. Then my second question is this. We heard that there was support for the parkland and the affordable housing, but not the private market housing. So the question is this. If the private housing element is not utilized, how much additional municipal funding would be required to allow for the development of the park and affordable housing?
Commissioner Hurdle.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. We don't have that answer yet because we haven't put the property on the market, and I wouldn't want to also provide information that would potentially impact our ability to negotiate and get the best amount for the sale of this property on the private market. But we have definitely looked at it, and it would be, you know, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're not talking about $20,000 here. I also want to point out that although there seems to be an understanding that at the public meeting, there were comments in terms of support of affordable housing, if you look at page five of seven of your report, there was a survey that was completed, and out of 188 responses that we got, there were respondent that included, if you look at the fourth bullet, respondents think that the location of the affordable housing block is suitable, over 51%, that do not think this location is suitable, 59 would prefer affordable housing nowhere on the site. So I want to make sure that council understands that we did receive a number, obviously, of comments and feedback through the survey that did not necessarily support affordable housing at all on the site.
Councillor Hutchinson, any further questions?
No. I suppose I have a comment. I just appreciate what the commissioner is saying, why she was replied in the form that she did.
Thank you. Councillor Neil, quickly.
Yes, I have just a couple of questions. It's my understanding that the zoning that exists there now is A1. It's an A-zone anyway, which is one or two family dwellings. I remember Helen Cooper years ago saying to me, "The value isn't in the land, it's in the zoning." So if we sell it, and I'm looking to a real estate agent who would probably know the answer to this, if we sell it as an A-zone, the value of that property diminishes. We will be altering the zoning necessarily for the affordable housing. I'm assuming that there's no intention of altering zoning on the piece of property that's been designated as private sale, which frankly, I think isn't a bad, is a good idea, because I think the community should have an opportunity through the public process at planning to debate about that. But is everything that I've, is everything that I've just said accurate as far as the zoning and the intentions of the city?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the zoning is residential, yes, it is our zone for low-density residential. We will not, the city proceeding with zoning amendment for that block. We are only proceeding with a zoning amendment for the affordable housing block. I, obviously, there's information that council has received in terms of the appraisal of the property, so council should be fairly aware of the most recent appraisal information that has been provided. I do not plan to get into those details, because again, with the intent of selling a portion of that property, I don't think it puts the city in the best position to get the highest and best offer for that piece of property.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we will move on. Information report number four, Kingston's celebration of Canada's sesquicentennial. Questions? We have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business. We have a couple of motions. Number one, that as requested by Hope Box Kingston, council proclaim October 15th, 2016 as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Day in the city of Kingston. Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Bohm. And that carries. Number two, that is requested by Crohn's and Colitis Canada, council proclaim November 2016 as Inflammatory Bowel Disease Awareness Month in the city of Kingston. Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor George. And that carries. We have no new motions tonight. We do have a notice of motion on the edits. Councillor Osannick.
Thank you very much, your worship. I do have a notice of motion, and that is that the following resolution approved by council on September 6, 2016 be reconsidered. Would you like me to read it? Okay. That council, this is what will be reconsidered. That council endorse in principle the concept plan as presented as Exhibit B at the September 6, 2016 council meeting, and direct staff to undertake the implementation of the concept development plan through the submission of applications for all necessary planning approvals as it relates to the affordable housing development and parkland block, and that council direct staff to provide a notice to declare surplus in accordance with the city's public notice and disposition policies, the portion of the site not to be used for future parkland, and that council direct staff to negotiate the sale of a portion of the property to Kingston and Frontenac Housing Corporation, and report back to council on property negotiations, and that council report back, and that staff report back to council after public consultation, and that council direct staff to undertake the necessary planning for the future development of the new park block, and include the cost of those planning services as part of the 2017 capital budget for consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other notices of motion? Seeing none. We have no minutes to approve. We have some tabling of documents, number of... I just don't... I stand corrected, we do have minutes to approve. Mr. Clerk.
Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Turner, that the minutes of city council meeting number 2016-25, held Tuesday, October 4, 2016, be confirmed.
And that carries. We have tabling of documents, number of communications. Is there any other business? Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. This is concerning a lot of the emails that I got recently and the fact that 671 Brock Street is proving to be a little more controversial than I had imagined that it would be. From what I've seen and heard, there seems to be a lot of misinformation.
So, okay, so I just, just want to pause here. Other business is not an opportunity for us to revisit other items in the agenda?
Oh, this is going forward.
Yes, but it is connected to an item on the agenda, so I'm going to give you just a bit of leeway, but I'm going to ask you not to speak to the issue that we've just talked about and that will be coming at our next council meeting. Typically, just to be clear, council, other business is typically announcements or other things going on in the community. It's not meant to create a debate. So, that being said, councillor McLaren, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. I'm hoping that moving forward, that we can find some ways of overcoming the difficulties that we did have, and perhaps a temporary committee or something like that, that can look strategically at land use of schools and perhaps other institutions, and consider a lot of what the strategic plan that we have, and perhaps there's like a 90-day period in between the time when these things become available, and we have to give a statement of interest, and that some such committee may perhaps be able to alleviate some of the high tensions and emotions and the passions that were associated with this recent issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Neil.
I'm looking for a little guidance from the chair on this. There were three specific information questions I was hoping to ask regarding parking and that report. I know it's been deferred, and I supported the deferral, but I think it would be, it would be nice to be able to get that information publicly from staff with three very brief questions, if I might.
So this is not the time that we can do that? There probably are other opportunities that we could find out how to get that information and disseminate that to council, but not in other business?
I will do, I'll do it privately, and I'll tweet it or Facebook it.
Very good. That would be great. Any other business? Okay, seeing none, then I will ask for bylaws. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we will first deal with bylaw number three, to which councillor George has a pecuniary. Moved by councillor Cannon, seconded by councillor Bohm, that bylaw three be given its first and second reading.
That carries.
Moved by councillor Cannon, seconded by councillor Bohm, that bylaw three be given third reading. Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor McLaren, that bylaws one, two, four, and six be given their first and second reading.
That carries.
Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor McLaren, that bylaws two, four, five, and six be given their third reading.
And that carries. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Counsel Bohm, seconded by Counsel George. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.